Ready to launch?
Ready to launch.
We're gonna confuse people terribly, though. We're gonna have just our thousands of followers tuning in at six and just...
Or maybe just the two that watch regularly every two weeks.
Just the 2,000?
On our live...
And our meeting... No take is not here yet, but that's all right.
This is terrible.
We'll go slow.
Yeah, thank you.
Ask us if we need to pause. Well, with that, welcome everyone to the Lincolnville Selectmen's Meeting. It is the last Monday in August. That's right. We just concluded our final Department Head evaluation. And with that, Selectman Fishman, would you read the quote of the evening, please?
Sure. "If we open a quarrel between the past and the present, we shall find that we have lost the future." Winston Churchill.
Thank you very much. I will, at this time, open the Citizens Forum for any non-agenda items. And having acknowledged that, we will also give anyone an opportunity at the end of the agenda, if that's okay with the Board, should someone arrive, being that we are having an unorthodox-timed meeting. And seeing no one rushing up to the podium, let's move along to the Administrator's Report.
Just to let you know, since the last meeting, we have completed the paving on Youngtown Road. And the shoulder work was... Should be complete. I didn't check the end product, but most of it had been done by Friday afternoon. And the Sewer District, they're apparently out to bid with the project once again. They are looking for a new trustee or somebody to run in September or October. You have to be a resident of the district to do that. And they have committed to... We reached out to them about the piece of property where the treatment plan is now. And they're committed to having that conversation with you, but they wanted to get through the summer season and hopefully their bids back and all that other stuff so they can go before they have that conversation. But they are aware of it. Outside of that, in the agenda, it's all to you.
Any questions for our Town Administrator? All right. Let's move along to upcoming meeting and announcements.
Lakes and Ponds Committee is scheduled to meet Tuesday, August 27th, 7:00 p.m. here at the Town Office. Midcoast Solid Waste Corporation Board of Directors meets Wednesday, August 28th, 6:30 at the Camden Town Office. Town Office will be closed in observance of Labor Day on Monday, September 9th. And the Board of Selectmen meets next on Monday... I mean, Monday, September 2nd for Labor Day, sorry. And the Board of Selectmen meets next on Monday, Aug... August... September 9th.
Thank you very much. Are there any upcoming community events anyone wishes to share? Seeing nothing, let's move along to the meeting minutes from August 12th.
I move that the Board approve the August 12th, 2019 meeting minutes as presented.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And we have a couple of appointments before us. We have one of our citizens here also. Can I have a first motion, please?
I move to appoint Jason Trundy as regular member of the Budget Committee with a term expiring June of 2020.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Any discussions or questions? Yes.
I would just like to let anybody that's at home watching know that there is still one additional vacancy on the Budget Committee, assuming this appointment gets made. And these appointments go until the next annual town meeting when they'll be on the ballot again.
Excellent. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor? Thank you very much. Mr. Trundy, thank you for your service.
Thank you. So the Lakes and Ponds Committee person of interest, is that person gonna be here tonight?
I believe she's gonna be here at 6:00.
Okay. Do we want to...
She is going to be here at 6:00, okay.
I told her that the... Well, like, before we even had the executive session planned, I told her the meeting started at 6:00, so...
Would you wish to table this until she comes?
Table that one at least until she gets here.
Okay, so we will do 7.5 and then we'll return to the other 0.5 percent of that, if the rest of the board is amenable to that. Sound good?
Sound good.
We have our... I almost skipped ahead to number nine, but we have the Chair of the Planning Board here before us to give our update for the Planning Board. Thank you very much, Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you, Jason.
Hi, my name is Dorothy Havy. I live here in Lincolnville, and I've had the pleasure of chairing the Planning Board for the last several years. It's my first time appearing before you, so I'm not quite sure what format you wish me to deliver information to you tonight, so I'm happy to take any questions, if there are any, at this time. We have a full complement of five members on the Board and two alternates. We hold meetings twice a month, on the first and last Wednesday, should that be necessary. Frank Terrio alerts us if there's something in the process that requires the Planning Board to be met. I would tell you that it's a really nice committee. We have a lot of historical knowledge on the committee. Jay Foster and Mike Cummings have both have served and written part of the Comprehensive Plan and really developed the basis for what we operate from, in conjunction with the information from the Maine Municipal Association, which governs and provides information about the Planning Board activity. And also Frank Terrio, our CEO, is very, very good. So we meet when needed. Last year, we had 11 meetings throughout the year. And... Give me just one moment. We begin our meetings at 7:00 p.m. We conclude by 9:00. We've never gone past 9:00 o'clock. All the meetings are televised on the cable, can be viewed on Channel 22. We have a Recording Secretary, Nancy Weezer, who takes excellent minutes for us. We're very appreciative of the effort that she has done. Last year, we reviewed one commercial site plan, nine shore land zoning, and one subdivision request. So it is varied what comes before us, and we are prepared in advance. And we try very hard to make the application process as smooth as possible and ensure that the people coming into town for whatever they want to do, new businesses or whatever, have the information that they need to go through the planning process.
Excellent. Any questions for our Chair?
Oh, it sounds great. A full committee with full alternates and everything.
That's good to hear.
Oh, so good to hear.
It is, really.
Hasn't always been that way, so it's...
It has not always been that way. And sometimes, in the middle of the winter, travel arrangements are hard and we have people away, but we've... I'm not sure that in the past year, we've not been able to take action on anything that's come before us in an appropriate and timely manner, so...
Perfect.
And again, I just want to make sure the Selectmen know that, and the Town Administrator, that we really appreciate the hard work of Frank. He does a very good job in making sure that the applications are as complete as they need to be before they come to us and that all the Ts are crossed and everything's done ahead of time, so...
Excellent. Yeah, that was gonna be my question, that you feel like you're getting the resources you need from the Town Office and the information in a timely fashion, so that you...
Yes, yes. And because we don't meet unless there's a need, the Town Office has to make sure that we all know in advance, and so they send out an email to us reminding us to come pick up our packet. And so we do that in advance of the meeting. And then I tend to send just an email reminding the Board members to... On Tuesday night, that there's a Board meeting on Wednesday, just because between Friday and Monday, sometimes people forget, so that's what we do. About the only thing I would tell you that is a challenge is if an applicant to the town has to send out information to neighbors, as sometimes they have to do. They come in and they use the record here at the Town Office. And at the last meeting, the property had been sold. And there is a lag time between that getting updated. And so the neighbor did not know, had not received notice and expressed concern.
The new owner?
Yeah, the new owner of an abutting property to a commercial site plan change.
Okay.
And didn't know why he couldn't know that. And Frank had a great answer, and he left understanding a little bit more about the process of how it goes through the legal system and the deeds and everything, and then it comes back in and then our records are updated. So, you know, in a perfect world, there'd be more current information available to us. But when I look back over what we did, that was probably the only hiccup, I think, that we've really had. The rest of it's gone well.
And then did a neighbor alert him to the meeting?
Yes, yes, yes.
So it was great he was able to...
So he came and he spoke to us, and he didn't have an issue with what was going on. He just wanted to make sure that we knew he was an abutter and felt he should have gotten that information. And yes, in a perfect world, you know, if he hadn't just brought the property in June, he would have gotten it.
Sure, yeah, yeah, timing, yeah.
Timing, it's just timing. And, you know, that all catches up eventually, so...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Other than that, so...
Any other questions for Dorothy?
We're very happy. We take advantage of... Maine Municipal Association has annual trainings for Planning Board members, and so we take advantage of that when necessary and appreciate the support.
Yeah, fantastic. No, this was perfect. Thank you very much.
Yeah, great.
Yeah, it's always nice to know what the other folks in town are doing.
Happy to do it. It's a very important piece of...
Yes.
Very important piece of what we do, so...
Yes, it is. Yeah, thank you so much.
Excellent, thank you.
And I presume...
She's thinking 6:00.
Okay, let's move along if we're okay with...
Sorry, you're too efficient.
...tabling number 9, moving along to number 10, to discuss consideration of the special town meeting warrant for September 9th, 2019.
So the matter of Bragg Adams versus Nationstar Mortgage, Town of Lincolnville, Maine DEP, Justin Humes, and the Department of Housing and Urban Development has been settled and approved by the Court of Court. The three properties that the town thought it had an ownership interest in prior to the case, with the lawsuit being filed, has been confirmed that we actually do have an ownership interest, particularly Paragraph 4. The interests of the plaintiffs in Tax Math 22 lots 28, 29, and 31, which are further described in Paragraph 1 above, are hereby declared to be owned by defendant and inhabitants of the Town of Lincolnville. So let's back to where we were, or where we thought we were...
Year ago.
Year ago, six months ago, whenever it was, quite a period of time ago. But at least now, the Court has said that, and everybody seems to know where they are. So at this point, we have an article that was prepared by the Town Attorney, allowing the Board, if the town meeting approves it, to be able to sell those properties upon terms and conditions the Board deems advisable.
Any questions for Town Administrator?
Nope. For anybody watching at home, just wondering where these properties are, these are the former Richard Rosenberg properties on Levin Seller Pond.
But not all of the properties.
Not all, three of the four. There's a fourth property that is now, or will be... The lawsuit allows Nationstar Mortgage to proceed with their foreclosure action on the fourth lot. And that lot has always... Maybe not always, but is current with their taxes. So Nationstar's been paying the bills.
So if there's no further questions for our Town Administrator, can we have a motion, please?
I move that the Board approve and sign a special town meeting warrant establishing the meeting for Monday, September 9th, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. in the Town Office.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And moving along to Agenda Item Number 11, to review proposed sewer easement for the LIA building at 33 Beach Road.
So you will recall that we had a previous version of an easement proposed by the Sewer District to put a pump station on the LIA building property at 33 Beach Road. Town Attorney raised a question as to where that was on the face of the earth, because it was a little nondescript. So we told them we needed a better description. They came back with this better description. And you can find it on the face of the earth, but I'm still just a little bit concerned that it might extend, if not to, perhaps even under the building, which I don't think we really want to do. So I've asked for clarification of that fact of where it actually ends, and haven't received it. But I presume when this... When they've satisfied that requirement, that it'll be okay to send to the Town Attorney to review the last tidbits and bring it back to you folks, unless you want to give them an easement under the building.
No.
Nope, that all sounds sensible.
Do you want a motion, or...
I don't think one is necessary at this point. I just, if there was something that jumped off the page at somebody else, I mean, it runs down what I would call the westerly property line, parallel to that property line down to where they get, where they're gonna put the pump station. We'll still be able to use the property once they put it in and bury all that stuff, so...
Right.
We won't be able to build a building on it, though, or anything else. This is what was talked about in the approved town meeting.
Yep.
Does that pump station, like, does that also serve the LIA building?
Yes. Yeah, they agreed to put it down there specifically to serve the building, and they would pay the cost of the installation and upkeep and maintenance of it, provided we provided them with an easement. The other alternative would be for us to construct our own pump station and not give them an easement connected to their lineup by the road.
At our cost.
At taxpayer cost.
Yes.
Okay, so they put a pump in, they put a line to the pump station from the building, and we're...
Well, we may have to, still have to make the connection from the building to the pump station, but that'll be, you know, me to you versus...
Right.
Me to the road.
Yeah. All right.
So, to be continued?
Yes, you'll get that back at some point.
And moving along to Agenda Item Number 12, use of Burn...
JAG.
JAG grant program funds.
Yeah, so we received, you'll recall, we had a conversation earlier with Chief Deputy Trundy about we have $921 grant funds that, at one point, the Sheriff's Office was contemplating a satellite Sheriff's Office, but with most of their funds, but they've re-appropriated that for another purpose that had a higher thing on their to-do list, which gave us $921 back to us to apply to use. They've got it set aside for us. We did obtain the solar-powered radar speed board, you recall, early in this year, through another grant program. And I thought it might be a good idea to actually mount that on a trailer so we could move it around a little easier than... Because this one's bigger than the one that goes on the signpost. So I put two sample photos of what others had done with those same units. I'm thinking it probably would be closer to the earlier one rather than the second one, the first one, rather than the second. We will have the issue of what to do when it's not in use. We have a store. I think we've got place, but we don't have, like, an internal place. So it may be likely that we'll take the brains of the unit and the solar panel off and put it down in the basement here, when it can't be used. It is weather... Cold weather, if you remember from our agreement, it won't hold the charge in the cold weather or deteriorates the batteries or whatever. They said if it's gonna be below 32, don't use it.
Right. And my understanding, too, with having a trailer like this, we can put it in other places that would be limited to, like, where there are existing signposts.
Yeah, right now, with our existing sign one, they either... You have to put it on a signpost. I mean, you can... I suppose you could bolt it to something if you had something in the right spot. But right now, for a quick connect, there's a bracket that just screws on with some wing nuts onto a... One of the standard U-channel posts. And then the way the wing nuts go on, the unit locks down, so you can't take it off easily. I suppose somebody could burn it off or hack it off with a hacksaw if they wanted to. But that limits us to where there are posts that are relatively plumb and relatively square to the road, or fidgeting with it a little bit. We have put it out on a temporary post before, but temporary posts are relatively easy to remove, because they're temporary. This would give us greater, in my mind, greater flexibility as to where it could go. Plus, if we set it up more permanently, I think after a short period of time, they kind of lose their effectiveness. I think that's the beauty of being able to move it around.
I see that the Chief Gagné had one of these built or assembled. I saw not too long ago, it... I think it was over to the Rockport Town Office.
Yeah.
And I see they're starting to use it.
They've got a little...
It's a small...
Fancyer.
Yeah, but they... Same idea.
Yeah.
They put that on a trailer.
Yeah.
It's a good idea.
Sorry, got started early.
Don't make yourself fond of a complaint.
Any other questions about this proposal, or is the Board ready to make a motion?
I move to authorize the Town Administrator to apply to use the Burn JAG funds for a trailer to be used for the solar-powered radar speed board.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much. Come on in, Susan. Perfect timing. We will jump back to Agenda Item Number 7.5. We... Just so you know, Susan, we just had an earlier executive session, so we just got going. So you're not late at all, so... But since you're... No, but since you're here, we knew that you were coming, so we didn't... We wanted to wait in the event that any of the Board members had a question for you. Are there any questions for Susan? Does anyone wish to make...
Just want to say thanks for doing it.
Thank you for applying.
Thanks for applying.
Just answering Dave's call.
I move to appoint Susan Silberio as a regular member to the Lakes and Ponds Committee with a term expiring June of 2020.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Just want to let Susan know that all Lakes and Ponds Committee appointments are through the next annual town meeting. They're not picking on you by making your terms shorter or longer than others, just...
Yeah, it's just the way that it always... It falls for anyone, and then...
They one-year terms?
Well, typically... No, they're all... Lakes and Ponds are all one-year terms. And all the other Lakes and Ponds Committee members that wished to be reappointed were back in July or June or whenever. So you all...
You'll get a notice.
You'll... Yeah, we'll reach out to you next year to let you know if you want to... Or ask you if you want to reup.
So if there's no further discussion, all those in favor? Thank you very much. Lickety-split.
So they'll let me know when the meeting is...
Yes, you will get...
Actually, so...
Tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night? 7:00.
Town Office, 7:00 p.m.
Here.
Here. And I'll let Gary know that you're in.
Congratulations.
Thank you. That was easy. Thanks.
Okay. So then, we have the treasures and payroll warrants to approve and sign?
Mm-hmm.
Nope.
I move that the Board approve the treasures payroll... Treasures and payroll warrants.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much.
And now if...
The last Agenda item we have... We could get the conversation started, can't we? Or...
Well, you could sign these warrants. I'll pass those down.
Sure.
Do that, do that. We gotta go back to 6:00?
Yeah, we can sign the treasures and payroll warrants now that they have been approved.
I guess pickleball.
For a moment of levity, I'll say it must be Selectman Garretson that makes these meetings run long.
Yes, it definitely is.
He's probably tuned in wherever he is, watching it on the web, and I'll be looking for a job next week.
Well, he probably isn't tuned in yet. We haven't started yet. We've still got six more minutes. What, the Agenda's at 5?
Oh, are we...
This'll be good, we can enjoy...
Are we signing this thing?
No, because this was just approving the draft of it.
Oh, I see.
This will be on the night. This is the one that will get posted.
I see. Whoops, did I forget to send this back?
What's that? Oh, yeah, thank you.
Wait, I've had it handed to me back three times. Very easy.
David, was somebody down there talking about the law?
Yeah, Greta's coming, assuming the meeting's gonna start at 6:00.
Here we are, done at 6:00.
They're not done.
And this letter that you gave us will be in our next...
Yeah.
Okay.
If you want it. Probably ought to be on the agenda.
No.
No.
Oh, no, we're long since out. We're just waiting for Greta.
Oh, she's out talking.
Yeah, well, why don't I go some...
Okay.
Dorothy's gonna grab her.
We started early.
Okay, I was like...
Yeah, the whole way, yeah.
Did you want to speak during the Citizens Forum?
Okay.
No.
It's really about pickleball.
Oh, yeah, but that's the one thing we have less to address.
And we did not start early. We started on time.
We did.
Very efficient with our first night.
Our meeting started at 5:00 p.m. tonight.
Oh, I see, I see, okay.
Oh, I called earlier today, and they said 5:00 p.m. was the executive session. Regular select board was at 6:00.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the expectation, some of the...
Plus or minus.
Actually, those go an hour, but that went so quick that...
Yeah.
Okay, good. Well, actually, do you mind if I distribute?
No, go for it.
Something really quickly? So as a member of the Rec Commission, I need to do some research. We've done a little advisory...
Thank you.
...video.
Come on down, Greta. No, you're not late. Don't worry about it.
Like, one, two, okay.
But please...
How do you go? I'm working...
Come to the podium.
I'm here supporting. Oh, well, that's a question. Okay, can I just turn it off?
Hello, I'm Greta Colleto from Sears Motte Road, and I'm here to give you a brief update on community pickleball in Lincolnville. Since I last spoke with you two months ago, it was June 24th, community pickleball... Since I last spoke with you two months ago, it was June 24th, community pickleball has moved from indoors at the gym to outdoors on our courts. The two outdoor courts have been taped. The tape lasts about four to six weeks, weather dependent, and the two courts have been retaped twice, weather happens. Two pickleball net systems were delivered and have been used in 14 sessions by 132 players in the last two months. Five pickleball paddles for public use have been loaned to community pickleball, and we fundraised enough to purchase a storage box for the pickleball equipment to be kept courtside. So regarding the location of the storage box, I've spoken with David Kinney and have had email exchanges with LCS president, uh, principal, Paul Rousseau, on the location because I wanted to have their input, and the proposed location, Paul Rousseau responded, makes the most sense. So I'm here to welcome your thoughts on its location.
David, do you have another copy of this image because this one's?
No, it's terrible.
Grim is the word I would use.
Grim.
I couldn't make a, any comment on it based on.
This one's slightly better than grim, but if you can't figure it out, I can describe it.
That's better.
So it would be below the retaining wall, so the parking lot at that point is at grade and then, you know, you walk down to the courts.
Where the pin, the, where the pin is.
Little pushpin, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So the back of the box would be against the retaining wall and it's on a strip of pretty flat land there. So it's outside the court fencing here.
Right, oh, okay, that's a clear picture.
The other one was pretty much black, so.
It was at night.
Is that a parking space or that?
No.
So it's below the parking space.
There's a retaining wall and then it dropped.
Oh, I see.
So you walk down to the courts, so I think the retaining wall is maybe three and a half, maybe four feet high. Box is about five feet wide, two and a quarter feet high, so it wouldn't even be visible from the parking lot, which I think is an added advantage. It was designed to be able to support two adults sitting on it if you wanted to, that wasn't our purpose, but people could do that there and, and watch tennis or pickleball if they wanted. Our, our purpose in having it there is so that the equipment is courtside, so the public can play pickleball when they want. Right now, I have to bring, or one of the other pickleball members have to bring the net systems down and the paddles down. If we can store it courtside, then people can play when the spirit moves them.
Mm-hmm. And then what's the long-term plan with the, the gear storage, that kind of thing? Are you going to move it inside in the winter or what's the thought?
So hopefully we'll be able to move indoors once the weather gets too cold to play outdoors. Most of us prefer to play outdoors when we can, so that would be back in the school gym. My husband has volunteered to help get that staked to the ground, so what he was suggesting was putting it on two-by-sixes so we can help level it well and then just stake it to the ground and then when it gets, the snow starts to fly, I'll just store it over the winter because we can use the multipurpose nets in the gym or if we want to use the equipment then I'm back to moving it back and forth. Because in the wintertime, you know, we only have access to play in the gym Saturday mornings when the school doesn't have student activities. In the summer, people can do it because the take, the courts are taped, so they can do it whenever they want.
Mm-hmm. Thoughts from the board?
I don't have any issue with it being stored there, except for the points that were in the paperwork that, you know, about as long as we, we need to sign some sort of thing that says, you know, we're not town as responsible for yada yada.
Well, I think, I think if we make a motion inclusive enough that clarifies that, I will ask either David Kinney or Greta, the, the email that's included in our packet, the response from the principal saying your preferred placement makes the most sense to me, are we left to infer that that is approval of having it? I mean, it's, it's.
Once again, we're kind of in the no man's land between the school and, and the town rec because when the, the tennis courts were actually built at the same time as the school, but the tennis courts were built under the auspices of the recreation commission along with the retaining wall.
Right.
So if the courts weren't built, then we wouldn't have a pickleball request because there wouldn't be any place to play there or store, but since the courts are built in the park, you know, it's right on that border between us and them, so I think, I think you can infer approval.
Okay.
That's a long way to say that.
Current thoughts?
We'll find out different.
Yeah, I just want to make sure of the whole harmless situation and what's going to happen, who's going to be liable if somebody steals the stuff, because this is security cabinet.
It's going to have a combination lock on it.
Okay, so.
Well, and if you, if you peek at the suggested motion, I think.
Yeah. It kind of covers it, but I didn't.
Yeah, I was just, I was just looking at this that I was just handed to see.
But that's not, that's not the topic of conversation for tonight anyway, so.
Okay, but when we get into questions, I do have one and maybe that would answer it, maybe it wouldn't because I really haven't had time to answer it.
Okay, because the agenda item here is to talk about this storage bin, that's, yeah, so. But did, you had other questions?
I just wanted to know what the rec commission's position was on this.
Okay, so any other questions for Greta before we can take her out of the hot seat and invite a representative here from the recreation commission? No, thank you, Greta.
Can I make one more comment?
Sure.
Thank you. So as the town approved $3,500 at the June town meeting, we are looking forward to having painted pickleball court lines and the resurfacing of the courts to maintain the court infrastructure for tennis and pickleball for Lincolnville. Thank you.
All right.
Come on down.
So, her.
Hi. So your question for the recreation question?
Yeah, what's, what's the recreation commission's position on this?
Our position is that we're fine with it. I mean, I think that it, having a storage facility to ease a new sport in town is wonderful. We've been more concerned about making everybody happy with the painting of the lines, so that's a little bit of a different conversation and that hence is the packet. The last two pages, I was too busy working today, are the not recommended, having two courts per tennis court, because the tennis people get very confused visually with the lines, but we, in our research, have found that one court with the net being exactly where the tennis court net is, is perfectly, the pickleball court lays inside the tennis lines, which is much more visually makes the tennis people happy. We want everybody to be happy.
Yeah.
And you can just all make a mild adjustment to the tennis net that's already there.
Right, now, Greta has.
I just have this.
Yes, Greta has already purchased her, her nets, which again, hopefully could be, you know, at a later date, maybe we can figure out another way to lower the net and/or use the nets that you have purchased, but I think the recreation commission, we've been hearing a lot of pushback from tennis people about the actual having two courts per one tennis court.
So, so what I'm going to say is, is that what is on the board's docket for tonight is the conversation about this storage unit.
Yes.
And to Greta's closing point is that there, what I'm hearing is, is that we have a, and when I say we, I mean you guys, have probably a couple other conversations to have before getting on the board's agenda, again, to come to us with a proposal because yes, there were some monies set aside with the intention of accruing funds to be able to address appropriate maintenance with the tennis courts, and so if we're going to talk about going into budget season, specific new lot, new, anything new, different, that will be rolled into the conversation that will be a request from the recreation commission.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I didn't know if you had a folder so far on pickleball, but that you could add to it, my little packet.
Yeah, and it's, it's so great, you know, and I think that this will, this will be a really, you know, this will be one of the layers of the building blocks upon which we can have a well-informed conversation.
Absolutely.
To have a really good plan going into next season.
But we do think that the storage area is perfectly acceptable for keeping all of their equipment that they might need and are excited that 132 people are liking.
Two of us.
I know, are liking pickleball, it's sweeping the country.
That's cool, yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
I know, so thank you.
So with that said, does the board have any more questions, comments, concerns?
None of them still.
Okay. Does anyone wish to make a motion?
I move that the community pickleball storage being be allowed in the preferred location adjacent to the retaining wall and facing the courts with the understanding that this approval can be withdrawn at any time and without any reason and that the town accepts no responsibility for the safekeeping of the bin or its contents.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much.
Can I get this one?
Small step.
Pickleball. For man, one of you guys.
And I will tuck this information in, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And does the board have any, I made a promise at the beginning of this meeting that I would open up the citizens forum for any non-agenda items.
I will note that Marcus here, I think he was here to hear the sewer district easement discussion, which we were very fortunate, the board was efficient in their duties and got through their agenda relatively quickly and the.
Approved the language.
Relatively. We just want to make sure that I conveyed this to Julie Ann last week, that the easement doesn't actually extend underneath the building.
Correct. It will only go to the.
Okay.
And for those off camera.
Because it looks awfully close to under the building to a layman.
Sorry, can, since you're here, can we, can we invite you to, just in case anyone at home wishes to be included in the conversation? So, re, just, just revisiting agenda item number 11 specifically with regards to the proposed sewer easement for the LIA building.
Yes.
Yes. So David asked, David, just to clarify, you wanted to ensure that the easement, easement doesn't extend underneath the existing structure?
Correct. I haven't seen the proposal yet for the easement, but as far as I understand, the grinder pump can go anywhere on the property, so we can pull it away from the building, which is fine, and that's, and that's going to be the amount of way that easement adds to the grinder pump. It would be up to the town to hook from the tank itself to the grinder pump, so whatever that, we're trying to keep it close so there's not a lot of cost involved in doing that, so, yeah, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, great. Well, the board already approved the language, so.
Good.
So you're good, but thank you very much for that clarification. Are there any other questions for this gentleman now that he's so kindly here?
I can't, I was on the end too, you guys did before, so.
[laughing] We're quick, sorry.
Any other questions, guys have any questions on so far?
No, thank you very much.
All right.
Much appreciated.
You're welcome, thank you.
And as promised, I would offer the opportunity for any non-agenda items to be brought to the board's attention by the piles of citizens sitting here in front of us, so. Seeing nothing, if there is no further business the board wishes to address, can I have a final motion, please?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much.
Wow.
It wasn't the fastest.
It was just the earliest.